Meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 15th Board of Education meeting. From 5:30 to 7 o'clock, we were in executive session talking about personnel matters and tenure recommendations. And we're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, but after we're done with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we can all stand, keep, remain standing because we're going to have a moment of silent, silence for two staff members who passed away.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, if we could have a moment of silence for two long-term teachers here in the district, Chris Porter and, well, Chris Porter is a teacher to staff member, Nancy Sill, who passed away recently. Thank you. And they will be missed. Tremendous people and loved by many of our community members. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2017 Board meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody here from the Student Senate this evening? Okay. Once. All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. A few announcements. We had six Bethlehem High School students named 2018 National Merit semifinalists. Seniors Jason Hart, Emma Crannick, Anna Perry, Denali Relis, Emma Whalen, and Alan Joe were chosen as members of nationwide pool of 16,000 semifinalists. So congratulations to all of them. We also had several student athletes nominated or recognized yesterday for NCAA. They had their national letter of intent. Looks like lacrosse was the big winner in rowing, golf, and baseball. So congratulations to those students as well. Yesterday, I attended with members of the Green Team an award ceremony at Union College. And our district Green Team received a New York State Environmental Award for all of the innovative initiatives happening in the district. We are recognized for composting, to our lighting changes, to our energy efficiencies in all of our gardens. So it was a really nice event, so I'd like to thank all the members of the Green Team, which is headed up by Mark Warford and Greg Nolte. So it was another great recognition for our environmental and green initiatives. And finally, I just wanted to update the Board on the District Strategic Planning Committee. We had a meeting last week, and we looked at the feedback that we received from the community forum. We talked about a survey that we wanted to distribute to staff, students, and the larger community. So we went through that survey. We kind of drafted that, came up with some other ideas. And that, the plan for that is to send that out between, or after Thanksgiving before the holiday break. We'd like to put it out there for a couple weeks and get that feedback. Our next meeting, we're planning to meet on the end of November, but the survey won't be out. So our next meeting is going to be January 24th. At that time, we'll look at all the feedback we get from the surveys, and that will help guide our work in regards to looking at the mission statement, the knowledge, character, value, and other areas that we might want to do some further analysis of. So I thought it was a productive meeting. I know there were a few members of the Board present. I don't know if they wanted to add anything to that.
I'll just add, I felt like it was a productive meeting. I think we made some constructive changes to the survey that's going to go out, and be interested to see what responses we get.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that we get a lot of them.
Yes.
Because I think the more we get, the better.
Right.
And I just want to acknowledge Jo Ellen had done a lot of prep work for us with templates, so we were able to work off some well-defined materials. I'm not sure, did you say there was going to be one for students and for staff also, correct?
Students will be for middle and high school.
Okay.
And we'll send that out and ask teachers and staff to help get that done during the school day, staff, and then the larger community.
Great.
And we will be putting something out in the spotlight to try and get people who maybe aren't connected with the school news notifier, they can go to our website and do the survey there. And if anyone needs paper copies of surveys, we will make that available for people as well. So hopefully we have some good feedback. That's my report.
Before we go on to the Board of Education report, pig students, you're just required to stay till 9 o'clock or when the meeting is over. I think you might get lucky tonight, I'm not sure. But 9 o'clock if we don't get done before then. For the Board of Education report, we had the Character Breakfast at the middle school this past week, which was a really nice event. Many of us were able to attend, and it's an opportunity to see the kids that are recognized at the middle school for demonstrating good character, good qualities. It was, it was a nice event as always, so. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
I had the chance yesterday and today to go into the middle school as part of American Education Week to pretend that I was a middle school student again. And I didn't make it to every class, but I did get to English and social studies and engineering and science. And there's definitely a lot of, a lot of interesting stuff going on, and it was, it was fun to see and, and to see how the kids are using the Chromebooks in the classrooms and just sort of the integration of that, particularly in the, in English class where it seems to be working very well. And I just wanted to say a thank you again publicly to the PTA for the food that they provided.
Were there lots of parents there? Were you?
At the middle school?
Yeah, for Education Week.
It seemed like it, but you know what? It's a little, it's hard to tell because it's so busy in the corridors when you're going between the classes. I will say, I'm not, I'm not quite sure how the kids all get to their classes on time all the time because I, it's a little bit of a struggle, maybe because I didn't quite know exactly where I was going between a couple of them. But yeah, I saw a lot of parents walking around. There are a lot of people there.
I just, in terms of the Character Breakfast, wanted to thank the Rotary, and they had quite a number of representatives there who, I think for the first time since I've attended them, actually gave some remarks. So that was lovely, tying community and character to the larger Bethlehem community. I also wanted to say for the semifinalists there, three of them, three out of the six are Elsmere alums. Jason, Emma, and Anna are all seniors who started their careers here at Elsmere. And I'm not sure how many people here attended Elsmere as elementary students. Did anyone attend? Yeah.
Oh, back there.
And lastly, on November 27th, I'll be going to the Lab School. I think I'm going to meet with some staff and faculty there and observe some classes and then also observe or participate, I'm not sure what they have plans for, the community meeting.
Oh, excellent.
Because they, they didn't have availability between our schedules for American Education Week, so it's been a while since I've been in the Lab School, so I'll be doing that.
Excellent. And I don't have all the details, but I, and I'm not sure if he was the only student, but Jack Hoover came in third for the state for the men's, I believe it was cross-country this past weekend, or?
Yeah. I don't know where he placed. I'm not sure he placed.
Or 10th, actually.
Yeah.
It was 10th. 10th out of 100, I think it was 10th out of 100.
Yes.
Which is still amazing in the state, so thank you.
He represented the school very well.
Yes, he represented us very well. Yes, I was thinking third, but it was 10th, you're right. So, but it's nice to acknowledge, even if I had my facts a little off.
This Saturday is the Girls on the Run 5K race. If anyone wants to attend, I don't know about the other schools, but I do know that Elsmere has a program. And I wanted to thank Coach Lindsay Mooney for all the time she's put into it. The girls practice two afternoons a week after school. And focuses obviously on running, but also on leadership and self-esteem and team building. And it's a really wonderful program, so they'll be running on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Jennings Landing along, and along the Corning Preserve.
Next, we have Bill Clermont, who's going to do the math presentation this evening. He is the K through 12 math supervisor, so welcome. And, oh, Andy, I'm sorry, I took your thunder. And Andy Baker's here, who's filling in for Kate Claus, who's going to introduce him.
Welcome to everyone. So my name is Andy Baker. I'm the ELA supervisor and interim Elsmere principal. And I want to welcome you all here tonight. Thank you to the Board of Education and Ms. Keough, Ms. Monroe, and Mr. Hurst for attending the meeting, or, thank you for attending. Thank you for holding the meeting here tonight and visiting Elsmere School. So I hope you students are ready. You might be have to, you might have to do some math problems tonight. You guys ready?
Isabel, why?
Those stares back look familiar. So I'd like to, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. William Clermont, the district math supervisor, who's going to speak about the district math program this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Thank you, everybody, for having me. Guys, he's not kidding, you are going to do some math today. I'm actually excited that there are a lot of students here today from the high school. It'd be a really nice perspective for us to see where math is going and where it was for you at the same time. So the name of this presentation is Making Sense of Math. I'm going to talk today about some of the programming changes that we're doing in the elementary level to try to lead us up to a smoother transition for students into the middle school and high school levels, where it focuses primarily on algorithmic and procedural-based learning. In the elementary schools, we're trying to get more away from that. So the presentation you're going to see today is a mixture of what we expect the students to be able to do and some thing that we really want the teachers to instill in our students and our children, especially in the elementary school level. A lot of things that we are looking to do is we're just trying to change the scope of how we think about mathematics. We want it to be more student inquiry-based, okay? We really want this to be student-centered, all right? We're trying to offer PD to our staff, both new and veteran teachers, to get out there to see some different ways of looking at math and different ways to think about doing mathematics. And instilling i-ready actually supports a lot of this thinking and supports a lot of these learning habits and behaviors. So doing i-ready this year is really helping us in getting teachers to see some of those really nice student-based and inquiry-based learning centers. So there are three things that we're going to focus on today. Those three things are visualization, reasoning, and number sense. So visualization, a student's ability to draw a picture, right? Can they picture it? Can they visualize what they're actually going to do before they go ahead and solve it? Reasoning, can they make sense of the problem? Do they have the ability to ask themselves, "I wonder what this means? I wonder what this represents?" before they go ahead and plow through a problem and they just start solving it? And then number sense, right? Number sense, being able to use numbers in creative ways, being smart about the way that they deconstruct and construct numbers back together again. So let's get going. Visualization. Here we go. Problem that a lot of us have done a long time ago probably, so some of the high school students, maybe not so long ago, but 27 is 3/4 of what number? The traditional way of mathematics tells us to do what? Look for key words, right? The problem says 27, that's a number, right? So 27 is, is equals, right? 3/4 is another number, right? Of what number? Multiply. What number is x, right? So we look for those key words, we translate those key words into an equation. And then how do we solve it? We use opposite operations and solve for x, right, guys? Yeah, we all know this. What's the first step? What's the first step? Come on.
They're seniors, they check out.
Uh, what's that?
3/4.
We have to get rid of that 3/4, right? Okay, so when we go back to a little bit of primary mathematics, our students, when they're young, don't know the reciprocal, they don't know multiplying by that inverse. So they start off slow. They say, "Hey, let's multiply by 4, let's get rid of that 4 in the denominator." Multiply both sides by 4. We get 4 times 27 equals 3x. Got to get rid of that 3 still, so what do we do? Divide. Got to divide both sides by 3. So now we see 4 times 27 divided by 3. Put that in red because 27 divided by 3 is what number?
9.
9. 9 times 4? 36. So we get 36. But did we ever actually think of what we were doing, or did we just do it? And that's the problem with what we have with mathematics these days. How about we do it a different way? This might change your life, tell you. Let's see if we can picture this first. Let's picture it. 27 is 3/4 of what number? I don't know what that number is, but I'm sure I could represent it somehow. There's x. We're going to represent that with a box. What information do we know? 3/4, right? So I hear the word 3/4, it makes me cut that box into what?
4.
4 parts. Equal parts, right? How many of those parts do we know?
3 of them.
We know 3 of those parts, and what is its value?
27.
27. Wow, we got some quick learners here. If those 3 boxes are 27, what does each box have to be?
9.
9. If those 3 boxes are 9, what does that last box have to be?
9.
9, isn't the answer 36? It's exciting, right?
See, I skipped all, I just did 27 divided by 3 and the, you know?
Yeah.
And did it that way.
That's great. Like visualizing, seeing, knowing, and that's part of knowing, right? We already know how to. So could we do this? And look at this comparison. Here's a nice comparative model of traditional approach in comparison to what we're looking at with visualization. Getting people to visualize mathematics. That mathematics doesn't always necessarily represent multiplication and division, that actually does represent something that you're looking to find. And we can represent that thing by using pictures and visualization. Let's see if we can do that one more time. You guys ready? We're going to do my way, not the traditional way. 30 is 2/3 of what number? So what's the first step? What do we want to do again? Draw a box. We want to picture this thing as a box.
With 3 parts.
3 parts. Why is it 3 parts? Because it's 2/3. There's our 3 parts. What do we know? 2/3 of it is?
30.
30. So we know those 2/3, those 2 parts. There's our 30. Each box has to be?
15.
Don't you already know the answer? 45. So as opposed to that traditional method where we're looking to set up an equation, multiply, divide, solve for x, we're actually visualizing it and picturing it. It's actually making a lot more sense because we can physically see what we're solving for. Okay? What about reasoning? Reasoning, again, we want to be able to think about math instead of plowing through it. Traditional approach, what do we do first?
9.
Subtract 4 from both sides, right?
Yeah.
Subtract 4 from both sides. What do you get?
24.
24. We get 3x equals 24. Next step?
Divide by 3.
X equals? I'll think about this in a smarter way. Let's first understand the problem, okay? We're going to make sense of this problem and what we're going to be doing instead of trying to remember how to do it. So there's a missing part here. 3x plus 4 equals 28. So the, the most confusing part is that 3x, isn't it? Because it represents some value we don't know. Watch this. Oh, cover it up. What value plus 4 equals 28? A first grader could do that, right? What is the value?
24.
It's got to be 24, right? The only number I could put in that box is 24. 24 plus 4 is 28, happens all the time. First grader could do that, right? So that value is 24. But what does that box represent?
3.
3. 3x, that's what it represents. 3x is 24, that's what it tells us. So now, 3x is 24, 3 what's? 3 what's is 24?
8.
3 eights. Isn't the answer just 8? Again, it's about looking at that in different ways. It's not about plowing through. It's not, and do we have to get there at some point? I mean, you guys can answer this question. Do you have to be able to solve an equation using opposite operations and solve for x? Yes. But if we start here, does that help us understand? Right? Does that help us visualize? Does it really help us grasp the concept of what we're actually doing and how we're trying to find it? Let's try a little bit harder. Here we go. We're going to really challenge those algebra ways of thinking. Oh, boy, what do we do here? Traditional approach.
2x minus 6.
Ooh, I heard distribute. That's a nice one. I kind of like that. We're going to subtract 4. In this case, we're going to subtract 4 to both sides.
Okay.
So we get 2 times x minus 3 equals 14. I can't change the slide.
Oh.
It's the way I set it up. So we subtract 4 to both sides. Brandon, what? We have questions, I'm sorry.
What happens in PEMDAS?
PEMDAS, remember, PEMDAS is about order of operations. When we solve equations, we're looking to do the opposite of that.
Wow.
Right? So PEMDAS, if we're trying to combine values together, we certainly want to use order of operations, right? PEMDAS is an algorithm, it helps us remember that, or an acronym, sorry, but order of operations is when we're trying to simplify, right? In this case, we're trying to solve. Right? Good. Thank you very much, Brandon, for the question. Subtract 4 to both sides, we get 2 times x minus 3 equals 14. Now, we could use the distributive property, or this gentleman said distributive property, but we could make this a little bit easier. We don't have to distribute. What could we do? We could divide. Now, let's divide that 2 out of there. Divide both sides by 2, we get 7. Get rid of that 3 by adding it to both sides, and we get 10. Or, about my part. We got a big cluster of stuff all the way at the top up here. If we look at that, 2 times x minus 3 plus 14. Think about what we did the last time. What does that chunk have to be equal to?
14.
It has to be 14. It can't be any other value. So we're going to tell it, "Hey, you're 14." That's 14, has to be.
Has to be 14.
Has to be. 2 times what value is 14?
7.
7. Doesn't that part in the middle have to be 7 then? And if that number has to be 7, what number minus 3 is 7?
10.
Answer's 10. Look at the difference between the traditional algorithmic procedural approach and really thinking about math and making it make sense. Let's just make sense of it. What is it asking me to do? I'm not trying to plow through it. I'm not trying to just figure out what the value is. I'm trying to understand it, get down to the root of what this problem is actually asking me to do. This is what we really are trying to get our teachers to employ in the classrooms, right? Smarter ways to solve problems. Picturing, visualize, understand, decompose, all those great fantastic things that we're reporting now. All right, you seniors, what do you guys think of the part? Pretty cool, right? Pretty interesting. About number sense. How many of you think you've got good number sense over here? You think you have good number sense? I might change that about. You might, you might be like, "I gotta, I gotta have some better number sense when I'm done with this." So we want kids to have good number sense. And number sense to a lot of teachers means a lot of different things. And even to adults, number sense means a lot of different things. But for us, number sense is your ability to deconstruct numbers and use them in smarter ways. How can I use a number in a smarter way that's going to help me solve problems? What grade level you think this is?
First.
First grade all day, right? All day long. What's the first way you learned how to solve this problem?
Cut your fingers.
Your fingers! Yeah? And some kids are like, "Eat my toes! I don't have enough fingers." Yeah, use your fingers. We, right? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. And you're like, "Okay, well, let's think about a quicker way that we could do that." Kids are like, "All right, fine, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14," right? So they're counting on, they're using their fingers. Is there a different way that we could think of that we could solve this problem and it has a little more meaningfulness? Because if we're doing that approach, what are we assuming about that 6? They're all 1s. We're assuming that that 6 is a composition of 6 1s. Is it 6 1s? Couldn't it be something else? What else could it be?
3 2s.
3 2s. What else could it be? 2 3s. What else could it be?
4 and 1.
A 5 and a 1. And that's kind of the idea. So let's start thinking about different ways that we could utilize what we know about numbers and deconstruct them for it to be a little bit smarter. So the first thing everybody goes to is, "Let's break up 6 into 2 numbers." So the first thing everybody goes to is, let's break up six into two numbers. What two numbers do they pick? Three and three! Threes are a, a minor here. Three and three! Like, woo! Those two numbers don't work well with eight though, do they? Why doesn't three and three work well with eight?
Cause they're odd.
You get a weird number, right? Eight and three is eleven. That's not really easy to work with, so let's not use three and three.
Two and four.
We're gonna use two and four. Why would we use two and four?
Ten plus four.
Because it makes it ten. And if we can make a ten out of eight and two, it's a lot easier for a kid to add a number to ten, isn't it? What's a, what's a ten in a four called? Fourteen. So we're not counting on, we're not using our fingers, we're looking at smarter ways to deconstruct the numbers so that we can work with them. Right, and this is, this is really the basis of what we're looking at. How about seven and five? I don't wanna know what the answer is, I wanna know how I can look at this in a smarter way to answer this problem. What am I gonna break five up into?
Three and two.
Why?
Ten.
Cause I make a ten, and ten plus two is? Twelve. Right, we're not looking at counting on, we're not using our fingers, we're not using counters, we're looking at really constructive, smart ways to work with numbers.
Got some question? Are you always trying to get to a ten? Is that something?
The easiest way for a student to, to do addition is to make a ten.
Okay.
Because when we make a ten, we can add a whole number to the end of that, and it makes it that much easier for them to deconstruct those numbers. So yeah, making a ten is the, is the first way, we wanna look for a first grader, moving forward, make a ten. And then we try to, we try to make that same process work in multiplication and some other ways. So you'll start seeing, as we move forward in this, um, believe it or not, this is a hundred and sixty slides to this slide deck, we've already gone through about ninety-seven of them. That's how quick this goes.
The board was worried.
The board, I was gonna say something at the beginning. Did you see there was a hundred and sixty slides? Um, how about subtracting across zeros? Who remembers how to subtract across zeros? You guys remember this? You got zeros all on the top, and you got like one thousand, and then you gotta borrow all these things, right? Traditional way, traditional algorithm. You guys remember this? Do you have anything in the ones place? No, there's nothing in the ones place. How about the tens place? No, nothing there either. Okay, so we go to the hundreds place, what do we notice? There's an eight, what are we gonna do with that eight?
Make it a seven.
We're gonna borrow it, right? We're gonna borrow a hundred from there, we're gonna borrow one from there, make that a seven, what are we gonna do with the next number? Make it a ten. Now we're gonna take that ten and make it a?
Nine.
A nine, now we're gonna take that nine, put that ten over there, and now we can go ahead and subtract. Traditional algorithmic approach. Right, answer's four hundred fifty-three. Or... We think about it just a little bit differently. Again, smarter ways to think about the same numbers. Here we go, same process, same number, subtraction. Smarter way to think about this. Let's go back to the beginning, do we have any ones? No. Do we have any tens? Are you sure you have no tens? Are you sure you have no tens? You still don't think you have tens? How about I draw a line there for you? There's a line. How many tens do you have now? You have eighty. Did you know that there are eighty tens in eight hundred? Eighty tens in eight hundred, and we didn't think we had any of them. We had no tens, now all of a sudden we have eighty, cause I drew a line. How many of those tens do I need before I can put ten in the ones place? How many tens do I need?
One.
I need one. How about I just make that a seventy-nine? Ten goes over there. We didn't have any tens a second ago, now we have eighty of them. I only needed one, go to seventy-nine, ten goes over. Do I get the same answer? Four hundred fifty-three, can I do that? I just did. How about we do it again? We're just thinking about smarter ways to work with numbers. How about this one? Is there anything in the ones place? Tens?
There's a hundred of them.
There are a hundred of them! Yes, charming! There are a hundred tens in a thousand. How many of them do I really need to borrow from?
One.
Only one of them, let's make that a hundred ninety-nine. Bring it over. Subtract. Which way do you guys like? I, I kinda like this one, right? Now we're really going to challenge this algorithmic approach. If you're really good with number sense, you should be able to do this in your head. You ready? In your head, let's go. We're gonna really challenge number sense here. Hopefully the board's ready for this one. Let's go, in your head, subtract four hundred and ten thousand seventy-two, two hundred and seven thousand five hundred thirty-six, and go. Mr. Hirsch, you got the answer yet? I'm sure he's got the answer. How about we think about this in the smarter approach? Is there a way we can deconstruct this number to make it easier? Watch this, it's gonna blow your mind. Bam. Look at that. Can you do it now? What's four minus two? What's a hundred minus seventy-five? What's seventy-two minus thirty-six? Put them all together, two hundred and two thousand five hundred thirty-six. Can you do that? Why not, right? Again, looking at smarter ways to deconstruct numbers so that it's easier for us to make these subtractions. Now, this isn't an algorithmic approach where we're like, gotta borrow here, gotta put it over here, gotta put it over there. It's actually thinking about smarter ways, looking at deconstructing the numbers. Right? Does this work with other operations? The answer to that is yes. The first operation we'll look at is division. A lot of students struggle going from multiplication to division. Seven hundred and ninety divided by two, you're only taking half, yet this seems to be a traditional problem that students, like, struggle with. But if we think about it in a smarter way, seven hundred and ninety should be easy to divide into. What if we break it up? What two numbers would you like to break up seven hundred and ninety into? Seven hundred and ninety. What two numbers you wanna pick? Hey! Ninety and seven hundred, look at that, can we divide those two numbers in half? What's seven hundred divided by two? Three hundred and fifty, what's ninety divided by two?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Three fifty and forty-five is three ninety-five. This is what we want you to be able to do. We want students to be able to look at numbers in a smarter way and deconstruct them so that it's easier to work with. You don't have to divide seven hundred and ninety by two. You have to divide two numbers that, that equals seven hundred and ninety by two. How about three hun- nine hundred and thirty and two? What two numbers would you like to pick?
Nine hundred and thirty.
How about nine hundred and thirty? Right, keep this easy, nine hundred divided by two?
Four fifty.
Four fifty. Thirty divided by two?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, four fifty and fifteen is four sixty-five. It, it becomes that easy, it becomes that ingrained in students that instead of focusing on the division, they focus on smarter way to deconstruct the number. Then they can take half, then they can divide. Let's kick it up a notch. Dividing by seven, cause I know that happened. Oh, you're only dividing by two. Alright, okay, fine, that's fair, right? Let's divide by seven. What two numbers you think you're gonna break up ninety into? This is the fir- first one everybody says. What are you gonna break ninety-one into?
Seventy and twenty-one.
Seventy and twenty-one.
Ah, you're cheating! Seventy and twenty, you cheated, Jonathan.
He didn't cheat.
Ninety and one is what a lot of people say. Did Dave tell you the answer? Ninety and one, right? But ninety and one doesn't divide very nicely by? Seven, does it? So the next step is to move the ten over, you get eighty and eleven. Eight doesn't divide by seven very nicely, and eleven certainly does not. And then we get to seventy and twenty-one, does that work?
Yes.
How about seventy divided by? Seventy divided by seven?
Ten.
Ten, twenty-one divided by seven? Three, thirteen. See, you can do this in your head, but you didn't have the ability to do ninety-one divided by three in your head. And that's kind of the idea, right? Look at smarter ways, we find it's a lot quicker. How about this one, the grand finale? The grand finale, what two numbers you want? Hundred ninety-two and sixteen. What's two numbers you wanna do? One sixty and thirty-two. The audience is really starting to help us out here. One sixty and thirty-two, look at that. One sixty, divided by sixteen? Ten, thirty-two divided by sixteen? Answer's twelve. I'll take that as a compliment, thank you very much. Um, so again, the idea behind this is that math really should make sense to our students. It shouldn't be a struggle. We shouldn't be grinding through things. If we can picture it, if we know enough about numbers and number sense, that numbers aren't constructed of individual ones, that they actually have other values, the tens in the twenties places, twenties places, tens in the ones places. That, they can actually work with these numbers so it's easier to do the math. So I do, I thank you for your time. This is a little bit of what we're looking at in terms of the elementary, lead these kids up so that when they're in high school, they already have this stuff ingrained in them. So when it comes to the algorithmic approaches that they have to do, and these kids will tell you, yes, you have to still solve an equation, right? Yeah, and you're gonna have to factor, and you're gonna have to divide, and you're gonna have to do all those things. But when they get up to there, if we continue to engrain this type of mathematics and this type of thinking, their success rate is gonna be so much higher than what it could be.
Do the parents get upset, you know, because they can't, they don't quite, quite understand? I'm sure the students do.
Yeah, I, I think there's, there's both. I think when we, the, the initial push for it, you definitely get some heat back for it. Uh, when we take that opportunity to discuss the benefits to the parents, is when they start really seeing, oh, okay. They just don't, they don't know it, you know, just like this gentleman just said, where were you forty years ago? Like, they just don't know it, you know? And once they, once they're aware of it and they see the benefits, it really does, they're just like, okay, yeah, no, we should do it that way, and, you know, they try to think of smarter ways to work with the numbers too. Once they start seeing things like this, the parents, they're like, oh yeah, I know, I remember this, we make these two numbers into this, we can divide, so, yeah, and, and some of the students do give you a little bit of kip, well, can't we just do it the old way? Well, can't we just do it the old way? Well, we're just trying to think of different ways. You know, and the high school teachers are, are starting to do it now. Think of a diff- think of another way. Right, I try to tell my elementary students, my teachers all the time, just cause a kid can do it one way doesn't mean that they shouldn't be able to do a ten. Right, one way is fine, and it's great, but the more ways you have, the better off you're gonna be in the end, so.
Who came up with this?
There's not one person, it's like a collection of people's ideas, all kind of thrust into one thing.
Because it would've been nice forty years ago.
Yeah, there are, there are, there are professional developments that our staff are going to that are inquiry-based and student-centered types of approaches with Bill Tasso and, um, a lot of his people. So, they're trying to get into those types of presentations because they just give them different ways to think and different ways, different approaches, um, which is nice. So, Bill Tasso would've been, been nice. I met him over the summer in Baltimore, he was very nice. Greg Tang, I met, he's a very nice man. Um, a lot of, a lot of his stuff kind of revolves around the same type of thinking. But they do some of this stuff already. I mean, number bonds are prevalent, Dave can tell you. Uh, he's really done a tremendous job before I got here to make sure that they're using number bonds and deconstructing numbers, um, and anchor tasks too, where we give students an opportunity to tell us what they know already. That kind of leads into all this stuff where, that we're looking at, so. You know, we've already been doing a lot of this stuff, we're just trying to really push it home. Especially with our new staff. You know, our new staff coming in, they didn't have that opportunity, the same opportunity that some of our staff have now. So the new teacher orientation, they got a taste of what this was too. I had a lot of questions after that. A lot of staff very curious, which is great for us. Really, really great, fantastic thing. They ask a lot of questions, so.
So, is the idea at the elementary level to do the new math teaching along with the old?
It has to be a blended model. So, to answer that question, I think yes, there's gonna be parts where, you know, you do have to do some of the algorithmic stuff as you move forward, but in elementary school, you, you really don't. I mean, you could in kindergarten just work with number bonds, and you could work with, you know, counters and, and looking at smarter ways like this. They don't have to do an algorithmic approach there.
I'm thinking like, you know, just with the, some of the basic addition, instead of just doing, you know, looking for ten, you know, still doing the, you know, doubles plus one, doubles plus two, you know?
They do all that stuff still. Yep, again, it's, these are just different strategies that we could use for all students. You know, cause that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to reach every student that we have. You know, a lot of students that, that can count on, and they do the doubles plus ones and all this stuff, they're not gonna struggle with things like that. What do we do for all the other students? You know, can we give them other strategies? And that's making ten is, is for anybody. If, if we can get kids to understand all of the different numbers that make ten, all that stuff, it makes it so much easier for them. Where they're, they're adding a whole number to ten. So, but yeah, I agree with you, there's, all of those phases have to be there. And so this is just a small part of it. But again, it's that thinking piece that we look at. I want them to be thinking about things in smarter ways and, and ask the kids to really, um, to do it themselves, really, you know? Show me what you know. You think about it a different way. How would you solve this problem? Find another way. You know, ask a friend, things like that, so.
So, so when I hear you saying it's not either or, it's both and, and it's really an additional tool, that it's?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, it has to be, because at some point, they're going to get there. They, they have to be these kids at some point. They have to solve an equation the traditional way. They have to do it in an algorithmic way. It's not that they don't, it's not that I don't want them doing that, but I want it to be a nice blended model so that they understand why. Like, if they were given the first, the, the, the common sense way of looking at it, and then the traditional, they're like, ah, that makes so much more sense. You know, so that they understand where the numbers are coming from and why they work that way, instead of just plowing through and getting an answer. It was sad, I asked my nephew the other day, he was doing some multiplication, he could show me that he did it, but he couldn't explain why it worked that way. And that's what we want, we want kids to be able to explain and understand.
Sure. And to think about it, I think, I, I have a son who's doing a master's degree now in math, and he, he's, he's in his graduate courses, and he said, um, it's getting a little harder now, cause he said to me, mom, math is formulaic, is that the term he used? And he said, now we have to think about why the formulas don't work and how we have to adjust them. And that's different, so.
You guys, you're there?
I don't know what he was really talking about, but I, I wrote down the word formulaic. So, I just said, yes, I understand. Uh, but, uh, but so the whole idea is from, from the get-go, they're starting to think about math just not as a series of formulas, but?
Right.
Different ways of thinking about it and problem solving, so when they get to a, a point where they don't understand why the formula doesn't work, or they have to tell people why a formula doesn't work, or understand that that formula's not gonna work?
Yeah.
They have different ways of thinking it.
Yeah, it's about creating independent thinkers. And that's what we want, that's what we're trying to create. That student-based, that inquiry-based learning is about getting them to be more independent and, and less teacher-led. So that the teacher doesn't always have to be there for them. That they have the skills to do it on their own, if they just think about it, and they think through it, talk it, talk it out. That's really what we're trying to do with this. Really, get good, creative, independent thinkers.
Thank you for a very fun and engaging presentation, because I have to say, I was a little bit skeptical with the examples at first, I'm like, why do we need to do it this way? No, seriously, but it really made a lot of sense, and it gives you, it makes you think again about things that you just assumed to be a certain way, that it can be done a different way. And I think most of the students, maybe not now, but they were engaged when the slideshow was going, and they were interested in seeing how it could be different. So I thought that was really interesting, great presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, how do we, how do we, if, if we're gonna adopt this kind of thinking, and, and to me, it's the old way, cause I actually learned math this way fifty, so, years ago. Um, how do we not go back into, to the way we're doing it now? In other words, we've rediscovered a really unique way of doing something. And I, I don't wanna see us go back to what it was, and like, so how do we make sure that we don't backtrack?
Don't let them off the hook. I, I think a lot of times, it's about the teacher's belief and the buy-in and what this can provide to a student. And a lot of times, they see how, how it provides to some of their lowest-level learners. Right, where the students, again, who have the ability to just add those numbers rote-ly. Right, they know that eight plus six is fourteen, they know it. They don't need to count on, they don't need to do anything else, they know eight and six is fourteen. The student who struggles with that, part of that is about the buy-in. They can see that if we show this to the whole class, and, and if we can get our smartest kid, who already knows that stuff, to think about numbers differently, then we've really succeeded because the lower-level kids are gonna, they're gonna pick up on it quickly.
You know, you're gonna put the flash card company's out of business.
Yeah, that's, you know, I don't wanna say that's my hope, but the hope is that this, that our students don't have to worry about crunching numbers twenty-four seven, that they can find a smarter way to deconstruct the number and still get the solution. Cause what are we really trying to get our kids to do? And that's the thing, like, if you were to reach up and grab it, what's the thing that you want? My son is in second grade, what do I want him to have the ability to do?
Think and reason.
Think. I want him to think, I want him to think, I want him to reason, I want him to problem solve. I, I, I honestly, as a, I just, I want him to think about smarter ways, and I want him to find a way on his own to answer a problem, regardless of what method he uses. And if he uses a traditional approach, that's fine. That's fine with me. But if he can't use a traditional approach, what other tools does he have in his toolbox? And that's what we're looking for. As many tools as we can put in these kids' toolboxes, let them choose. Let them decide. That's what we're really looking for, a kid to make a decision.
Thank you.
So would you compare maybe possibly towards reading comprehension versus number comprehension? Would that be a good comparison?
Sure. I, I don't see why not, I mean...
Strategies for com-
Yeah, that's how I was thinking about it.
There's different strategies for reading, and there's different strategies for, you know, decomposing and composing numbers to, for them to make sense. So, yeah, I mean, I could see, I could see how those two would go hand in hand, absolutely. Yeah, again, they're all strategies and tools that kids can use.
So, it's not either or?
No, I don't think so. I think it's a blend, like I said, I think it's a blend model. It's a model that should be blended. It doesn't have to be a single way.
Are you gonna offer any, um, parent education programs so that more parents can understand the homework that comes home, and they can help their children?
It's a great question.
That is a great activity.
I mean, I would love to, you know, I, I would, I would do this presentation for parents.
I mean, it, it's very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I would, if, if we had, if we had the opportunity to do it, I would do this presentation for parents. Sure. I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to see what we're trying to get our students to do, and why we're really doing it. Because I'm sure they have just as many questions as you all have. Um, well, why, you know, do we have to do it that way? The answer to me is no. We don't have to do it that way. We are looking for different ways, so, yeah, I, I would love it.
I mean, it's just when you get homework home and you don't understand what they're even asking, it would be really useful to understand why you're asking them that question.
Great, yeah, no, that would be a great idea. Fantastic.
Are, are you focusing on introducing the concepts at a particular grade level, or in all of them?
This is straight up K-five.
Yeah, just, I mean, this isn't new, I mean, we did a similar presentation five years ago. I mean, we did a similar presentation five years ago. The idea behind this is you can all, you can forget an algorithm. You can't forget understanding. So, while the algorithm will eventually take hold, you can't start with the algorithm. You have to start with these basic foundational pieces so that when you do develop the algorithm, there's true understanding there so that if at some point you're struggling with a problem and you forget the algorithm, you can back up and say, wait a minute, I can just sort of reconstruct this problem without having to worry about the algorithm. So, the problem with the old traditional algorithmic approach is if you get halfway through a problem and forget the algorithm, you have no fallback. So, if you didn't memorize, you know, eight plus six is a small enough example that you could count on your fingers. But if you get to a point where it's larger numbers, you can't count on your fingers. But if you have strategies to break the number down, you don't have to worry about regrouping because you can do it in different ways. Whereas if you forget the regrouping algorithm, you're stuck, right? The subtracting across zeros, if all you ever learned was that traditional algorithm and you had no idea why it worked, then once you sort of get halfway through the problem and you're like, oh, I'm not sure this is working, you don't know what else to do. So, the real heavy lift is we've been providing, for the last five years, we've provided quite a bit of professional development around this. We have two challenges. One, the teacher prep programs are just starting to expose teachers to this. So, anyone that hasn't been coming out of college in the last three, four years were really never exposed to this. So, they were taught using a very traditional method. They went to school and learned a very traditional method of teaching. So, now it's, we're spending a lot of time in professional development trying to get teachers to understand the importance of, it's not gimmicks and tricks, it's true understanding of what's going on. So, back to, you know, PEMDAS came up. PEMDAS is not good because it's a mnemonic device that most kids don't understand. They think it means you have to do parentheses first, then exponents, then multiplication, then division. No, no, it's multiplication, division simultaneously left to right. And oh, by the way, depending on how the problem is set up, you might jump around and group things and not even follow that order. But if you just have this PEMDAS thing in your head or the other one from high school that everybody remembers is foil.